I call this meeting of Sylvania City Council for July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fry?
Mr. Fry is absent and excused.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanam?
Here.
Mr. McMahon?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Dow?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Six members of council are present, therefore a quorum does exist. Um, I'd like to welcome all of you to our city council meeting. I know we have representatives of Sajard here. And I'd also like to recognize the neighbors here in the second row. These are people from the Balfour neighborhood. And they came to council with concerns about the fire damaged house in their neighborhood. That is reportedly receiving improvements without building permit and review and has been an issue in the neighborhood for fifteen years. They are here tonight because they thought there might be a legal agreement with the owners and how to resolve this. This is not ready and will be back in front of council probably at the August meeting and we've invited them back. They don't, they did not choose to talk tonight as long as I'm representing your position accurately. But we appreciate you being here and we hear your message. And I've shared it with the chief of police and the service director as well as the law director. So we will try to stop the illegal improvements going on at the house. We'll work with Lucas County building regulations in that effort, which apparently are taking place on weekends. Um, and we'll do what we can. We will take care of it with the legal processes available to us to get it done right.
Thank you.
All right. We appreciate you being here and I, I ask you to join the rest of us in our pledge of allegiance. This meeting led by Lindsay Dow.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
additions to the agenda. In the absence of the president of council, we need to elect a president pro tem. So I'll put that on the agenda as agenda item three A. Are there other items that members of council would like to add? Hearing on, Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shaw?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Or Ms. Bryant?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schreier is absent tonight. He's had a medical procedure and will be back in the office tomorrow as far as I know. That is their motion to approve the agenda as amended? So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and our agenda is approved for this evening's meeting. Starting with the election of a president pro tem for tonight's meeting. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Hanam?
If I may, I would like to move that we make Patrick Richardson, uh, president pro tem for this evening's meeting.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. You've nodded, Mr. Richardson, so you must be all right with that?
Sounds good to me.
All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and thank you, Mr. Richardson. Um, we'll start right off with agenda item number four, approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting on June seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to, uh, I'll make a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes for the city council meeting June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four as submitted.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes of June seventeenth as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and those meeting minutes are approved. We're now on to agenda item five. Uh, we're pleased to have representatives of the Sylvania area joint recreation district here tonight. Mrs. Westfall, we'll let, you are a representative to them. Would you like to introduce them?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. Yes, I would welcome that opportunity. Uh, Sajard is here tonight to talk about their levy that will be on the ballot this year. Joining us and at the podium right now is Brian Teaser. He's president of the Sajard board. And we see Mike McMahon is here also. I believe he intends to speak. So I ask for your attention to their details as I explain the needs and the request.
Welcome. We need you to give us your address as well. I know it's right here on Main Street.
Yeah, yep. Uh, Brian Teaser, fifty-eight, twenty-eight Main Street, Sylvania, Ohio, four-three-five-six-zero. Um, and I'd like to thank, uh, council and Mr. Mayor for having us here today. Uh, the Sylvania area joint recreation district board of trustees has unanimously approved all necessary litigation or legislation to be placed on the November twenty-twenty-four ballot. We're asking the community to consider the replacement of our two current permanent levies. The benefits, the benefit of Sylvania area joint recreation district for purposes of acquiring, equipping, developing, operating, and maintaining, it's a lot to say, recreational facilities for parks and recreational purposes. This is not a new tax. Again, this will be a replacement levy. Uh, when approved, the additional funds will be used to expand and improve on longstanding recreation services and facilities that have been a major contributor to the quality of life that Sylvania residents have come to expect from Sajard since nineteen eighty-eight when it was created. As one of the original legislative authorities that assisted in the creation of Sajard more than thirty-five years ago, we're asking the city of, the Sylvania city council for support by formally endorsing this levy. We appreciate your consideration and if you have any other questions, I know we sent a packet with all the information.
How do you suggest for the matter, given everyone is alone, ask you to define a replacement levy? It is the same millage, but the millage will be updated to be correct, collected on current property values.
That's correct.
How big of an impact will that have?
So, uh, based on the numbers that we have currently, the additional, we have two permanent levies currently in place. One that dates back to the year two thousand and one that dates back to the year twenty-twelve. Uh, those, uh, project at about one point seven million dollars in revenue for our organization. Combining those two levies and updating them to current values will give us an additional five hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually to just have updated, uh, monies. Again, no new millage, so it's not a new tax. It's simply making current a twenty-four-year levy and a twelve-year levy.
So you're gonna be going from one point seven million into about two point three six million.
Two point two six.
Two point two six. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
I do remember the first levy some thirty years ago. Um, and it's been a great improvement for our Sylvania community. We have for years been the envy of Northwest Ohio for our ability to work together in the city, the township, and the school district to provide the venues and the program that many other communities have been envious of for decades. Um, it's gone through several leadership cycles. We've had some wonderful people on the board. We've had some wonderful people in charge and I'm glad to hear that you're going to keep up the work by asking for the funds necessary to maintain your current programs and maintain the existing facilities.
Absolutely. And for clarification, we have two permanent levies that we have combined into one. So moving forward, there will just be one permanent levy. Again, same millage.
And the board of elections, that already has approved?
They have. Yep, they have approved all of our ballot language and we've had that all gone through.
Questions for members of city council or comments, Mrs. Westfall? You should go first.
I just would say that I appreciate all the hard work that, uh, Mike McMahon puts in. I know that he's working very diligently to make sure that everything is safe and that is a priority for Sajard and that we are addressing the needs of the Sylvania community. I do think that this is a very important levy to help close the gap in funding and to allow us to continue to operate in a maximum way providing needed services to our community in terms of our recreation support.
And for the record, I just wanted to ask regarding the additional funds, what that may go toward if you have highlights or?
Uh, they would go into our operating funds. So this isn't a capital levy. This is for operational funds that we can use both for operations throughout the district and for capital, uh, improvements that we have, uh, needs for throughout all of our existing properties.
Uh, Mr. Teaser, it might be helpful to share with the group just for benefit of their information and for the audience, the actual number of properties that Sajard is responsible for.
Uh, so there's, so there's, well, I'm not gonna rattle all of them off because I'm sure I'll forget them. There's lots of them. Uh, but we have thirteen permanent buildings and we manage, uh, over two hundred acres of property within Sylvania.
The school district sites are part of those. And I remember before Sajard, those fields were not maintained very well. There were burrs in all the outfield. I used to pick them off when my kids made practice. Backstops were broken down, infield's were muddy and Sajard, that was one of the first things Sajard took on and really improved the quality of the playing venues right off the, right off the bat.
Absolutely.
And continue to do so.
I definitely pulled burrs off of my socks playing in the same school.
Mr. Mayor? As an add-on to that, as being one of those kids who was having the burrs pulled off, I have enjoyed Sajard's contribution to the community throughout my life while living here. I continue to enjoy it now, including, uh, Pummer Pool. Maybe it will be just down the street tomorrow if it's hot weather. So glad to hear, uh, you guys are making the effort to be able to upkeep those operations.
Pummer Pool is the latest property that Sajard has taken on for the community. And we received grant money to make the improvements to the pump house. And there will be more improvements made after the swim season to the bath house. I've had the chance to review those plans and the city will be hoping to bid those here shortly. But it's not a terribly expensive project, but it will provide, it looks like, an assembly room for birthday parties and things like.
We think it'll have a big impact and something our community has asked for and needs.
Okay. Questions, gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just repeat what has already been said. I mean, Sajard is a key part of our community. It is, uh, essential to the quality of life that we have here. Um, I know we've got folks here. I know we've got folks here who've been working on this for a long time. And your leadership is welcome. Having had kids enjoy those fields and now having grandchildren enjoy those facilities. I appreciate your hard work and I certainly think you warrant the support of the community. And frankly, our community, I think, values the recreation aspects and the services you provide. And I expect that communal support will. Thank you.
We appreciate the presentation. Are you asking for endorsement or not?
Yes, I thought I mentioned that at the start, but yes. I did, but it's all right. We, everybody was busy saying how great we were, so.
There's two things they say council can do. One, they can have a motion of support, but typically they prepare legislation for an official, an official endorsement, which would come back to council at our meeting in August. That would be on August the 19th. And we'll need a, whatever council chooses to do tonight to sort of legislation, which you can do a motion in advance for whatever good that will do you.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that council endorse the 2024 Sajard levy and ask that administration prepare legislation for the upcoming event.
Second.
Seconded discussion. Hearing none, call the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and we will have an official endorsement piece of legislation on August the 19th.
Thank you.
Thank you, please. We're on to agenda item number six. We also have the metro parks here to make a presentation. Mr. Matt Hillam.
For what it's worth, I've lost handily at every one of your facilities. It's so humiliating and gratifying to be here. You have great parks and you've got a great project, you've got great people around it. So I guess for the second fill here, I know you have a really, really long agenda today, so I'm going to move through this as quickly as I can. My name is Matt Hillam. I'm chief outreach officer for Metro Parks Toledo. I'm here to talk about our system as a whole and answer any questions you may have, needed out of your hair. Sort of us by the numbers is we have about 270 employees, which has about 100-person swing from a seasonal standpoint. We see about six and a half million visits annually to our park system. And our top three parks in terms of visitation, one of them is in Sylvania, Wildwood, and one of them is adjacent to the town of Grand Rapids. One of your guests and I were chatting about earlier. This is what our footprint looks like from Lucas County standpoint. It goes all the way out to Howard Marsh and the Rusland Township and swings all the way out west into Providence and Grand Rapids. We opened up Manhattan Marsh in 2020 and we opened it up. It kept a promise that we're going to have a metro park within five miles of every Lucas County resident. We do three things. We are into conservation, accessing connectivity and experiences. We steward over 13,000 acres. And how good are we at this? In 2020, based on about 20,000 Lucas County residents, we found out that we were within the final four of the best park system in the United States. This is by the National Park and Recreation Association and their gold medal. Their gold medal award is similar to the Oscars or a Heisman Trophy. We found out we're in the final four with Dallas, Texas. That sleepy little bird, I don't know if you've ever heard of that place. Mesa, Arizona, and Baton Rouge, Louisiana. So what do we have in common with those places? Absolutely nothing. So we quickly started preparing or making a campaign that what it was like to be the second best park system in the country because no one knows who comes in second and no one can remember it. But we came in first. And one of the reasons why we did is because we have about 6.5 million visits to a county that has about 420,000 residents in the saved region, which has about 260,000 residents. But we're going to see a lot of exciting things here today, but our dark secret is we're actually a conservation agency. We'll build a hotel in the clouds, meaning the Creosse Village in Swanton. We'll build a mountain bike course in the flattest place on earth. But we are all doing those things to dupe people into caring about the Northwest Ohio ecology. This is right in your backyard, right? This is the C4 Metro Park expansion. It's about 230 acres. It is in a couple to four-year period of restoration. It will eventually be the house of cross-country meets, going from little kids all the way up to collegiate opportunities. We are about connecting people to these parks. About three years ago, we were a year of bridges. We built a bridge over Main Street downtown. We built a bridge into Swan Creek. We built a bridge going from Brookwood into the Anderson estate. But just importantly, we rebuilt the Wildwood Bridge. We never built anything without forgetting about the things that we are already in charge of stewarding. So when we replaced the Wildwood Bridge, we were literally replacing original strand and issue bridge there. So a lot of exciting new things, right? But we take care of what we've got. The downtown area is getting some focus, right? This is the River Walk. It is three miles of green space on either side of the river there. So it connects the Craig Bridge all the way up on the left-hand side there, down to the Anthony Wade Bridge. That is where the downtown insignia is. That is the Owens Corning headquarters. Jump over the other side of the bridge. It's another two and a half, three miles connecting the Anthony Wade Bridge all the way up back to the Craig Bridge. We opened up phase one and two in 2020. It is a 365 venue. We borrowed ideas from all over the country. We did not know how popular sledding was going to be downtown. We bought about 20 slids in February where we found out it was going to snow. We thought maybe 15 or 16 kids would show up. 1,200 kids showed up. I don't know if you guys have children or not. They do not share. They're like savages. But what we did realize, if you build it, they will come, is only true in moving. If you build it based on what people said they wanted you to build and invite them over and over and over and over again, then people will come. And that's what we found. Phase two opened up. We built a ribbon, which will not lie to you. We stole this idea from downtown Chicago. What do we have in common with Chicago? Nothing. But what do we have in common with Dallas? Nothing. In fact, we do this better than that. So the ribbon is an ice skate, or a roller skating venue. It is right now roller skating. The Mini Mommy is that splash pad there for kids to play. It becomes this ice skating arena during the winter time. It has been extraordinarily successful and very popular. I've been ice skating one time in my entire life. It was when we were stealing this idea from Chicago. It took me about 50 minutes to get around the ice skating ribbon. But it's not for me, right? It's for everybody else. We had 50,000 skaters within a short amount of time when we first opened it. The Mini Mommy is a real taste of what the metro parks does well. We had about 30 public meetings, right? I'm frequently asked how much my job is like parts and rep. The answer is television show. The answer is none of it, except in the public meetings. I'm sure that never happens in here, but occasionally people just come to yell at you. Well, we kept hearing people wanted swimming, 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 swimming. We don't do swimming, but we certainly work for the people of Lucas County. So we had to figure out how to do what they wanted. What our plan was to build the splash pad. It's a giant splash pad. The pad is an exact replica of the Mommy watershed. It, we're coming up on the 10-year anniversary of our water being toxic. It's when I got my wife to move here from Chicago. So having to live with me and not have the water be drinkable was a tough sell. She is still here, thank God. So the group, the Grosse Peak Adventure Play Node is a giant play feature supporting, it's 40,000 feet tall. 40,000. It is a giant, it's 40 feet tall. It's a giant place structure. We stole this from Kansas City candidly. We went to visit it. There was a downtown park, the radio legend had passed away, left his state to his neighborhood. They built him a giant microphone to play in. We built a giant migratory bird. We continue moving along International Park. This is what its current state is. It is interesting transitioning looking just like this. So we went down there today. All this process is the process of being moved. It will be play features. It'll be place for kayaks to launch, kids to play, and people to sit in the shade and just enjoy being downtown again. This is in front of One Seagate. This was its current state on the right-hand side there. That was the only way to get to Anthony Wade Bridge, the Martin Luther King Bridge there. That rickety old metal staircase that was only good for tennis. It will transition into this. The bottom right-hand corner shows the bend, which will be fully ADA accessible. And that old lighthouse there, if you've ever seen it in operation, which I've never had in my entire life, it does want to be this play feature and we are building that in short order here. This is the area adjacent to the way over Owens Corning. Not in terrible shape, but certainly not very inviting. It will be just like this in relative short order in multiple use path there. Places for people to sit, places for people to walk, fishing. We will be distributing gold retrievers to everyone in Lucas County, your dog fans, which I am not. I mean, they're fine. Dogs are fine. So whenever you inherit a bunch of stuff, right? You're supposed to call them opportunities. This is an opportunity we received from the city of Toledo. This is their former streets and harbor building. We candidly were looking to demolish it and build more green space. But what we found out is what people wanted to do is play pickleball year-round. Pickleball is not going away despite what I would have guessed, I guess, 10 years ago. It is here to stay. It's also a great sport for seniors to play. It's very easy to be okay at pickleball and there's no place in our region to play 365. So we found an operator here in our own backyard. We are not going to operate this. We don't rent skates. We don't run restaurants. We don't sell beer. We let people to do that, do that. We put your money into clean bathrooms, safe trails, and stuff for kids to do. So again, I rolled through that very quickly, but I know that you guys are super busy. I'm just pleased to be here in your company. So thanks for supporting the metro parks. Thanks for having a great park and rec system. We're honored to be your colleagues. Any questions?
I do have one right off the top. A lot of these improvements you've been able to make is because of successful grant writing.
Yes.
City grants. Talk a little bit about that.
Yes. We have been recipients some last seven years of $70 million of state and federal money. We are the two-time recipient of the Raise and Build Grant. That money would have gone to name any other city USA if it wasn't for our skilled grant writer and his team. They are excellent facilitators. But the truth is, we deserve it, right? Sylvania, Mommy, Toledo, we've got great people and we've got real deferred maintenance that needs support. So we've been able to generate what I would describe as an overwhelming amount of federal dollars and state dollars.
These are wonderful facilities. I've had my grandchildren in every one of them.
Okay.
They really like that 40-foot-high migratory bird. And when I was there, I saw large older children playing on the same structure as my smaller grandchildren. And it worked.
It does work.
I was amazed by that. Was quite concerned, but no. It, it worked for both.
Yes, I think no matter how good or how many awards you get, I think it's important to not think you've got it all figured out.
I figured out the watershed.
All right, yeah.
I've been to Swan Creek. I've been to all the parks.
Great.
Worked very well.
These are borrowed ideas, but Northwest Ohio deserves world-class amenities.
It's great that you, your board, and your director have been able to bring these funds back to the Toledo area for all of our benefits. Now, you are here on a mission tonight beyond just bringing us up to date.
No.
Are you on the ballot?
We are on the ballot, but I'm, since I'm a public servant, the campaign for the levy is run by volunteers. So I'm here just to update you on our progress.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely, of course. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions from members of the city council? Thank you so much.
Thanks very much, certainly.
We are up to agenda item seven. The city has received a request from Sylvania municipal court judge Bonfiglio for a salary increase for his magistrate court administrator. And when that came in, I discussed it with Mr. Pride and we decided that that kind of a mid-year increase really deserved to have some review take place on it. It would make that person by far the highest municipal employee in the city. And we're not accustomed to giving out big raises like that in a mid-year. Also, we're reporting to city council. And I think it should be referred to the employee relations committee. That would be Mrs. Westfall's committee. And we recommend that you meet with Judge Bonfiglio in advance and come back to the rest of council with your recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with that. So I, I move that we move this agenda item to the employee and community relations committee for further review and discussion to come back with a recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and the issue is referred to committee. That gets us up to agenda item eight. Mr. Shaw, I think the stuff you're bringing is really exciting, but the room really emptied out.
We're staying.
Believe me, I am not offended.
All right, we've got a number of issues we need to get down to, Mayor. First one has to do with a agreement to work with the state of Ohio with US 23 Monroe Street interchange project. Explain the agreement to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. This is our local LET project agreement with ODOT on our famous US 23 Monroe Street interchange project. We've done several of these types of projects over the last six, seven years. We're pretty accustomed to kind of the path that these go on. This is usually a step that we take pretty early in the project. Usually before you start the design or once you get underway, you put the project agreement together, which describes roles and financial responsibilities and who's doing what. In full disclosure, with ODOT, they had some transitions and the people that administer that portion of it, it was kind of at one point ready to go and then the retirement happened and it kind of fell between the cracks. So we were looking to get pretty close to buttoning up some of the engineering work and we had come across this, that this agreement had not yet been executed. So here it is in front of you. But pretty standard stuff, like you said, outlines the responsibilities and roles with each agency as we go through the project. So in front of you is the local LET project agreement for the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Can you remind us of, it's a, the 24, that $24 million number is big. And how, and I think there's an attachment that breaks that out at the end.
Yep.
And the number here is actually $33 million on the last page.
Right. So the cost that's on the cover of your sheet is construction. So your 24 is about your construction dollars. Your project cost is in that 30 range there. So of the, of the 24 million there, roughly, we got about $9 million in safety funds, another six in surface transportation funds, another three in congestion mitigation and your quality funds. I think if you add them all up of the 33, there's about 19 to 20 of it covered in grants that we were able to get ourselves. ODOT is doing contributions towards the project. They have construction administration that they're doing in-house. Those are contributory funds towards the project. So ODOT will be the first to tell you that this project is grabbing funds from just about everywhere we possibly can to do this locally and get it done timely. So a very unique project.
This back page shows a total of 33 million and the city's cost about 5.8.
Yeah, and that would be through right-of-way acquisition. That would be through detailed design. That will be through construction.
That's everything. Okay.
This adds, it's today through stage three design.
This was a wonderful effort by Mr. Aller and Mr. Shaw. We worked with TMCOD to bring these funds together. Other communities were very invasive the way we're here, but bring it together. There's also a companion project, which is a repaving of Monroe Street, I believe. It's going to be taking place at the same time. And I don't think it's in this. That's a separate project.
Let me take a quick peek. I think it is.
That would be good. It is.
District preservation funds. Yeah, so those are in the project construction costs.
Okay.
Your LPA.
There's a lot going on.
Sorry.
There's a lot going on. It's a two-year project. Next year will be the reconstruction of the new entry and exit ramps on and off the expressway. And then 2026 will be the reconstruction of the bridge over the expressway. So it's a two-year project. Next year, traffic will be maintained. Over 2026, when that bridge is closed, traffic will not be.
You have everything right.
Everybody be able to, everybody coming in from the west part of town will be able to get on the expressway and head south. Coming home from work.
They can't hit across the most. Right. Areas between the ramps is in 26, what you're talking about is being closed. So those are your, those are your tough areas there. So ramps will be on and off, but getting in between the ramps is the hard part in 26.
Any questions for Mr. Shaw? If not, I need a motion for ordinance 84 2024. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to be introduced by title only, ordinance number 84 2024. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Transportation on behalf of the city of Sylvania for the US 23 Monroe Street interchange improvement projects. I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 84 2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 84 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item nine. This is a neighborhood resurfacing project and for Urgus and Lynn Haven. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project was awarded to
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project was awarded to Bowers Asphalt and Paving in the amount of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars and ten cents back in April this year. This was an unimproved street, straight residential resurfacing. Bowers Asphalt did an exceptional job. I would give him a ten out of ten. Good communication throughout, excellent execution. Property owners extremely happy. Win-win-win-win-win project all the way around. Really well done. So, we're here for a final change order to adjust the contract price. We had two largest savings on the project. We used a good chunk of our pavement repair budget, about eighty-five percent of it. So, we had a little bit left that we didn't use to correct pavement base issues. That saved us about five thousand dollars. And we only had to use about thirty-two percent of our erosion protection budget, which was like linear grading. So, after the contractor does his millings and we get some brushings into the yard, we come back with some topsoil and seed and kind of freshen up the edges. They did a very good job and were really clean with it. So, we had a pretty good savings of four thousand dollars on that effort, too. So, that's just good contractor care. So, the, the total change order would be to reduce the awarded amount by twelve thousand seven hundred five dollars and ten cents, which will adjust our contract price to one hundred seventy-six thousand eighteen dollars, one hundred and eighteen dollars. So, and that deduct of almost thirteen on the project.
I receive no comments or complaints from the residents on this project. So, it must have gone pretty smoothly.
It was really good.
I do know several people in the neighborhood, particularly on Lynn Haven, and they haven't called me up about it. We appreciate it.
Wonderful job.
We do have to enact this change order in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred five dollars and ten cents. We have proposed ordinance eighty-five two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only ordinance number eighty-five two thousand and twenty-four. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to approve change order number one, final, to this city's agreement with Bowers Asphalt and Paving, Inc. For the Bent Brook Road, Burgess Drive, and Lynn Haven Drive resurfacing project, decreasing the contract amount by twelve thousand seven hundred five dollars and ten cents. I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance eighty-five two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance eighty-five two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. Agenda item ten is a change in the Aurora Place development on the north side of.
Alexis Road.
Alexis Road because at the eastern edge of the city, you may remember that was a Natura development eight or ten years ago.
Yeah, two thousand sixteen.
Bring us up to date.
Sure. Aurora Place was a planned development that came in front of this body back in two thousand sixteen. It was kind of in a regularly zoned parcel, but the intent was to do some commercial lots up front and then do some residential higher-density stuff in the back. And that's what they move forward with. As council, I've got some dates listed and some ordinances there for members who may not have been here, that they certainly can go back and take a look at some of those things. But the PD was ultimately approved in two thousand and seventeen. So, it's called Aurora Place now. Almost all of the villas are filled. The development's pretty well-built out. And as a part of the plan development, we've got two pieces going on tonight at council. This first one is the easement agreement, and then the second one that I'll talk with is about amending the PD itself. So, on the easement side of it, when the plan development had come through, we had requested as a part of our plan review comments that they had to provide sanitary sewer and water easements on the property so that we could get in and fix the mains if and when it needed to happen. They were in it. We come to get to the amendment piece of it, which they contacted us a couple of months ago. They wanted to do some changes to it. And we said, hey, we don't have any recorded copies of the easements that were supposed to be with us a while ago. And they said, yes, we didn't do that. It was kind of an overstep. So, this is going kind of back to the plan development that we had, getting those easements recorded for sanitary sewer and water that should have been done in the first place. So, that's the first piece of this, is the easements for the water and sewer. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions on those.
Okay, maybe we ought to hear the other one, then we'll come back and.
Sure.
More about this.
Okay. So, now they want to amend the plan development. Now, the units are built. Mr. Mercurio came to us, and he decided he wants to put together some condo association bylaws. He currently owns them. I think he wants to get out of owning them and do it as a condo association. To do that also, he has those two business-zoned places or wants to be business-zoned up front. He does not want to own those either. So, the amendment piece of it is kind of twofold. He wants to do kind of a split of the plan development so that the, the front two parcels become independently out of the plan development. So, you just got two lots that you can sell. And then the back half of that would be the amendment piece where you grab all of the residential road. And that actually becomes the plan development piece moving forward in a condo association. That's the request.
Lots along Alexis are currently zoned B two. He's not proposing any changes to that.
So, so what it is, is it's, it's R two B or R two PD. It's R two plan development, and it's the whole.
That's the house part at the back.
That's everything.
Well, it's everything.
It's the whole thing.
That's what I mean to C two.
That's right. Wants to make the front two B two. Yes. Yes.
So, the way this works is, with regard to the easement, this, we just do the easement. I got that. This petition, we refer to the planning commission, right, for their evaluation. Okay.
I'll have to get my thoughts together about it. I remember we wanted something up along Alexis Road.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. He had acknowledged to us that how he thought the development was going to be managed moving forward has changed. So, he, in all the, he wants out of that whole management piece of it. And that's the reason he wants to carve out the B two pieces and sell them.
Road and utilities up to being broken down into separately-owned properties?
Yeah. So, the road and the utilities and everything would still be in the PD, all the easements? Still go in the PD. The only thing you're doing is just carving out the B two.
Is it private road or public?
Private road.
Private road.
It will remain private?
Correct.
Owned by the condominium association?
What businesses are on those front parcels?
There's nobody there. They're vacant.
From Alexis, the, the road?
Yeah. So, and that's a good point, Mr. McCann. So, what we had mentioned in the PD, and it's hard to see in the Xerox copy, was we wanted anti-vehicular access easements along the Alexis front. So, because it's you, the curb cuts, the curb cuts will have to come in from the driveway.
I remember this from planning commission coming to us and his discussion of the front two properties. So, I'm not surprised that it's come to fruition like this of the split, but is this the best for the city is, is the question. And just from your perspective, is, do you see any?
From my seat, no. I don't see really a difference in it. I, I'm more interested in access and how people get to and from them.
Part of where I'm going to.
I think if he has these out-of-the-plan development, maybe it's a little less restrictive on the people that want to buy those lots. You know, maybe that's a, that's a way he wants to do it, too. It would be zoned B two, so.
These are occupied now?
I think so. I think every one of them is occupied.
Okay. So, do, are these people are aware that he wants to condominium, condominiumize?
Yeah, he's got to go through that process with it.
So, did he go through the process or would like to?
He, he didn't want to go forward with any of it till he thought the plan development amendment process had legs.
Okay, well, backwards. But.
Thank you.
This is going to be an issue when we do, when we do a public hearing. Are they going to be, are, are these residents going to find out for the first time that they're going to have to buy their units?
My understanding is he's had conversations with them, Mr. Heenan. That's my understanding.
I'd like proof of that.
We will find out. Yeah.
Well, yeah. I mean, I want to find out in a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
I, I would, I would appreciate it, Mr. Shaw, if you could have a discussion with him and find out what the status is of his discussion with his residents.
Sure.
Not everybody who, who rents wants to buy. I mean, that's just, this is a significant shift. And I will be very interested in what the residents have to say about that. You can tell them council's concerned about our neighbors and how they're going to react to all this. And let's get that straightened out.
In the meantime, I think we can go ahead and refer to the planning commission.
I'm sorry?
I think in the meantime, we can refer to the planning commission. If they're comments, they can't change it anyways. It comes back to city council to make any change. True, but I, I think that it'd be, the conversation should take place before the planning commission.
So, you can report to the planning commission what the situation is?
Yes.
Okay. So, the planning commission understands what the playing field is before they consider this. And that might warrant them postponing a, a decision or continuing it until we had an opportunity to understand how our neighbors are going to react. This is a significant change in the arrangement.
I assume he's not providing financing for all this?
Yeah, I know the answer to that. So, anyway, so we don't normally talk that much. Well, I do sometimes about these referrals. But I think we ought to do some more work on this.
Is it appropriate to proceed with, well, it's an old easement. We should probably proceed with that.
Yeah, for sure. That, that should.
That's part of the, matter of fact, that, the fact that we're doing the easement now makes me nervous about the rest of it.
Okay. We do have ordinance eighty-six two thousand and twenty-four to accept the easement. Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number eighty-three dash twenty-two. Access of special tax upon the lots and lands described in.
Did I get it?
Retract.
Ordinance eighty-six?
It's eighty-six. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number eighty-six, six dash twenty-two. Accepting an easement from Mercurio Developers, Inc. for the utility purposes, dedicating the easement for public purposes. I move for passage of ordinance number eighty-six dash twenty-two as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number eighty-six two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance eighty-six two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. And then, Ms. Bryney, should we have a motion to table the petition for the zoning ordinance amendment?
Yes.
Mr. Heenan.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to table the petition of Mercurio Developers. I don't see an application number on here. Relating to eighty-six twenty-five pepper, I'm sorry, relating to parcel number eighty-two dash oh-five dash one-eighty-two. We're setting a zoning change to convert to condominium development until our meeting in August.
And so, if you're going to be the contact person, you need to explain why city council tabled it. It's a concern about converting rental properties to owned properties and how the residents don't want to own or dispose. Second. The motion has been moved and seconded to table this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll be back to you in August with what's transpired between now and then. We're up to agenda item eleven. This is a T-Mobile lease agreement, third amendment on the Burnham Park elevated water tank. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some, there's a lot of numbers in the letter. I'll just give a little bit of history to start with. We have had T-Mobile on our Burnham Park tank water tower since two thousand and one. First agreement that we had was for twenty-five years, and that expires in November of twenty-six. So, we're very far along in that first lease. It has been amended twice over the course of the, of the lease period. It was amended once in two thousand and eight and once again in two thousand and twenty-one. They're way ahead of the game. Obviously, we're almost two years away from the expiration of the lease. And this one would be to modify it and extend it. So, there were two primary things that were changed in the agreement. One was the term period, and then one was the rent schedule. So, to go over each of those. The, the proposal in this agreement would be to extend for another twenty years from two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and forty-six. And then, in the agreement, it had nine additional one-year period extensions, which they call an extended period. So, that would take it up to two thousand and fifty-five. So, that's almost twenty-nine years of extension on it for the term. Rent schedules are listed below. It kind of takes off from where the, the rents would have stopped in two thousand and twenty-six, and it just kind of picks it up from there and steps it out. So, how the rent schedule works is those are listed there for the first five years at four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars per month. And then, that's for the first five years that were there. And then, we would escalate sixteen percent over the course of the next five-year term period. So, those numbers are listed there. I won't read them all, but it kind of shows you when the lease payments go up per year per the agreement. So, so extending it through at least two thousand and forty-six with the possibility to move it to two thousand and fifty-five and then with those rent payments that are outlined in the letter. So.
Are there any requirements for them to participate in improvements to the water tower, like three P T?
Uh, nothing in there for that. We use the rent payments to help us with.
About when was that last painted and when will we do again?
Dixon Engineering just inspected all of our tanks this year. I think we have a couple of years yet till we'll start coatings on. They all have different ones. Some of them have wet interiors. Some have exterior. So, I might mess those up a little bit standing here. But in the next couple of years, within the next five for sure, you'll start to see painting activities on all three of our tanks.
Even the newer one on the ten-tenth?
Even that one. Yeah. Even that one. That one will be, was it two thousand and eleven when they went in? So, we're at thirteen years. Yes.
The, not seeing the leasing agreement in front of me, but with any technology comes change. The lease agreement is with the life of the equipment. And I say, within the next five years, we're going to have another type of either cell service or potential technology that comes along. What, what do we have as part of a reclamation from? Is that a part of the lease? If they decide to shut down activity or stop use of the tower?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we've actually had one, one entity. I want to know if it was Sprint. I could be speaking at a turn on that one. But we may have had one that actually ceased operations, and they had to remove their equipment off the tower as well.
So, we have the same agreement in place with them?
These guys do technology improvements along the way. Some have put in some generators. Some have done some different things along the bottom of it. But, you know, we do work with them on those types of, in technology-type improvements, too. But when it comes to actually having something that needs to come off, there's language in there to take care of those.
Yeah. This agreement goes through fifty-five, but it wouldn't lock them into having to, let's say they stopped in ten years, then.
Yeah, the lease has a language in there about terminations with each party and notifications.
Okay. All right. Thank you. How many bases do we have on this burn, fire tank?
Uh, T-Mobile, Sprint is no longer, um, TNT, and I'm forgetting one. I think there's three. TNT and TNT.
The footprint of the bond tank kept getting bigger and bigger. So, we had new leases.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah.
Just, did they give any, I guess, any of their thought process behind the nine additional one-year extensions? It just seems odd to have twenty years and then separate nine, nine extensions afterwards.
We did. The answer that we were given is this was the standard new lease agreement they had moving forward nationwide. They're trying to get all these lease agreements with kind of the same structure and same language. There was a lot of different. We'll do this for this entity. We'll do this for here. They've kind of gotten more to a standardized look with how those go. And they said that was a part of their standardized look. I don't know if they've got something pegged technology. and they said that was a part of their standardized look. I don't know if they've got something pegged technology-wise for two thousand and forty-six that really makes someone oscillate back and forth year to year. Maybe that's something people in technology know that I don't.
Yeah, the, the coterminous language, at least in communication, is, makes sense.
Okay.
This one is eventually.
Yes.
Hours with it now.
Now's the time to do that.
Yep.
Mr. Shaw, I recall when we were talking about the north east of that. Was the thing that we mentioned in that one that they would be responsible for moving equipment at the end of this use? Is there something about that in this? Does that become a standard in cities? Get it spot on.
It's not in the amendments.
That was a little more serious because they built the tower and we'd be stuck with the tower. This one, we're not taking the water tower down.
Okay, we do have proposed ordinance eighty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four to enact this third amendment. Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing a third party, I'm sorry, a third amendment to water tower attachment lease agreement between the city of Slovenia as lesser and T-Mobile Central LLC Delaware Limited Corp. Liability Corp. Company as lessy for a portion of the water tower within Burnham Park and additional land in Burnham Park for the purpose of installing, constructing, maintaining, repairing, operating, altering, inspecting, and removing communication fixtures determining said city-owned property not to be needed for municipal purposes during the time of the proposed lease. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to sign said thirty agreement to the water tower attachment lease. On behalf of the city of Slovenia, I move for passage of ordinance number eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second.
We've moved that seconded for passage of ordinance number eighty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries and ordinance eighty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. I'll turn to the page two of the agenda. We are up to agenda item twelve. This has to do with Slovenia Avenue Pumping Station. This is the one down there across the street from the voice count reservation. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Slovenia Avenue Pumping Station is our second largest in town behind our Monroe Street Pumping Station here at Burger King. This one was installed in the nineteen seventies when we switched sewage locations. We signed on to the Lucas County Wastewater Treatment Plant. We did a really large contract which installed gravity sewers and pumping stations that took flow down McCord Road instead of going to Toledo. So the station.
Oh, actually, we had a road treatment.
Right, we had, well, even before that too. Yeah, great, Mayor. So this station has been around for quite some time. We've done a very good job up to this point in taking care of it. Some of the limitations that we're starting to see on a pump station of this age is replacement parts for the pumps themselves. We've done a pretty good job of finding them. The last couple of rebuilds that we've had, we're really starting to see some challenges in getting those replacement parts for those pumps. For those that have not seen this, I'd be happy to accompany you down to the station. It is forty feet below ground in a single man lift.
I see people go down there.
It is quite challenging and looks stressful if you don't like the space.
One-man lift that goes down.
It is. It is. So that's not super safe. We don't necessarily like having our, our, our operators down there by themselves in a single man lift. We can certainly make a better design than currently what was there from the nineteen seventies. So we've done some due diligence on it. We think now is the right time to replace the station. There's some really interesting options to look at from an engineering perspective about where we put pumps and how much head we can take it up and really make things safer. That's all going to be a part of this project to replace the pumps and put in a new, new dry well to house everything for it. This, that's the project. This is great because Slovenia Township recognizes the importance of this station. It services about twenty-six hundred, a little more than twenty-six hundred of their benefited users. We have about a thousand, a little under eleven hundred that use this station as well. To give you an idea of the footprint of the pump station itself, it's on the west by US twenty-three, on the south by four seventy-five. On the east, close to Whiteford, not quite there, or Talmadge, I should say, Talmadge Road. And then on the north on Monroe Street. So that's kind of the box that this, this area serves. So they recognize the importance of it. They obviously have more to contribute to the station than we do. As a recognition of the importance of the pump station, they'd like to contribute two hundred thousand dollars towards the cost of the project. So this would be a joint cooperation agreement to acknowledge that.
This two hundred thousand dollar participation was brought up by retired trustee John Crane.
Correct.
And we appreciate that very much. Is there any expected reduction in our regular charges to non-city residents in the sewer rate?
Sewer rate, it depends on how we prepare the application. Usually what we do when we go after OPWC, OPWC funds on the sanitary sewer side is there are some minor rate adjustments that come with those. It helps us score a little bit better. We're not that far with the, with the OPWC application process to understand if that's the direction we want to go, but that's certainly an option that we do look at.
But we have two sewer rigs. We have one for city residents.
Correct.
And one for non-city residents.
That's correct.
There's no, no expected reduction in the non-city resident rate as a result of this contribution.
You're correct. Yep.
That's why I wanted to know.
Yep, correct. And Mayor, I will point out one thing too. We will be going, partnering with Lucas County Sanitary Engineers Office as well. They have the facilities on the, on their side of it. So when we actually do the OPWC request, we'll have money contributions that will be coming from them as well. So this township contribution of two hundred thousand is, is really nice and really welcomed and a, and an awesome gesture.
In the application process.
Absolutely. Hundred percent.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other upgrades to the feeder system that goes into this pumping station that are necessary or included in this project?
Nothing that's needed yet. Most of our side of the system is gravit, gravity when it gets here and it's relatively newer. Holland Slovenia from south of twenty-three. Most of that's relatively newer sewer, not a lot of aged infrastructure. So nothing's currently scheduled on the books. On their side, they do have a lot of I and I that they deal with and I think that's probably some things that they'll want to look at to reduce some of the groundwater that gets into the system. It's an older system than ours, but no improvements on at least our end of the managed system.
Projects in the near future.
Right, they go to this system, no, just the pump station.
Thank you.
Yep.
I assume when we do this, there won't be a single man elevator like this. I, I wouldn't want to send, I wouldn't want to send an employee down there.
It doesn't go quick either, so it's a long ride.
Yeah, I don't want to do that. Thank you for fixing that.
Lift on the Corvus North of Central. I think that was a meter reading station. Is that still there?
It is. It's not operational. We don't do our, our sewer, we don't do our sewer contributions to the plant based on strength of waste anymore, so there's no need to sample those. Yep. Yeah.
All right. We do have proposed ordinance eighty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four entering into this joint cooperation agreement with Slovenia Township. Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing the mayor and the director of finance to enter into a joint cooperation agreement on behalf of the city of Slovenia with the Slovenia Township Board of Trustees relative to the Slovenia Avenue sanitary sewer pumping station replacement. I move for passage of ordinance number eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second. We've moved that seconded for passage of ordinance number eighty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance eighty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. Onto agenda item thirteen. Elven Ditch Watershed Improvements, a project that's complete or nearly complete. This is a final change order, number two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our phase one project that was started last year in October. Didn't quite get all of the work items completed. Did as much as we could through winter months and then suspended it until the weather resumed. Did some final grading work and coordination with Sage Art on how they wanted that to look and get our seating done, but we're finally there. Took a little longer than we wanted to, but project is completed. Jim Palmer Excavating was awarded the contract last year. That was back in May by ordinance forty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars and nineteen cents. This is our second change order on the project. We did have one that was at the end of last year regarding some additional tree removals. We had two trees that were added to the contract as well as one dead one that was going to be a fall hazard with our equipment that was out there, so three total. And we did that in November for forty-two hundred dollars to increase the contract. We've installed all of the infrastructure there. Our final quantities have been resolved and we can reduce that contract amount by eleven thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-six cents. So from where it was originally awarded to where it finished up was about seventy-three hundred dollars. So we would request approval of change order.
Two really nice change orders for us today. All right, we do have questions for Mr. Shaw. There were some concerns in the neighborhood about the project during construction. Now that it's all graded out, everything's been resolved as far as you know. We also heard a complaint that we filled, backfilled around trees and we're filling trees. I assume that's not the case.
We've had success with it. We actually had a, a really good test of an event last week with Hurricane Barrel that came through. Locally, we had three point two inches of rain in under twelve hours, which if you get it too, too far into the weeds in engineering, that's close to a twenty-five-year event. That's pretty big for us. Storm sewer systems are usually not designed for that capacity, but this detention facility was. So didn't get many reports on any issues with it, so I know it functioned well. So, good.
Okay, we do have ordinance eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four to authorize this final change order. Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number eighty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to approve change order number two, final to this city's agreement with Jim Palmer Excavating, Inc. for the Elven Ditch Watershed Improvements, phase one project, decreasing the contract amount by eleven thousand dollars, four hundred ninety-four and seventy-six cents. I move passage for ordinance number eighty-nine dash twenty twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second.
We've moved that seconded for passage of ordinance number eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item fourteen. This is a banner application. Not the first time. We've done this one in the past. Welcoming George Gray Road back to the Slovenia community. This is a requirement in the legislation that each county will provide for you to come back here. Any issues with the way Lawrence has cooperated in the past?
Great.
Major Mills.
Yep.
It's fine. So we have ordinance ninety, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Hayner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move adoption of ordinance number ninety dash twenty twenty-four. By title only, approving the banner application of George University.
Authorizing the zoning administrator to indicate such approval on behalf of the city's. And move adoption of ordinance number ninety dash twenty twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second.
Seconded for passage of ordinance number ninety, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance ninety, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. We're now up to agenda item fifteen. This has to do with a surface transportation block grant application. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our work on Main Street continues. You'll see in the next couple of weeks, this would be our second rendition of work on Main Street. So back in two thousand and eighteen, we did the piece in front of Saunders. We used surface transportation block grant funds to help us with that. We're moving up on the other side of Main Street to do our downtown transportation improvement project. We're using COVID relief funds to help us with that. The phase that's in construction, starting in a couple of weeks in front of St. Joe's, will again have used surface transportation funds to help us. So we're marching our way down to get to Brent and hopefully going to use this program along the way. But the federal money takes a long time. You got to get in the pipeline. They only open the windows up every two years, but that's the, that's the best option we've found so far. The Main Street projects score really well in that program, so we do good there. So in this particular application, this will take it from south of Ravine through the intersection of Convent and probably somewhere south, almost to the south limits of South Prior. And that kind of gives you the footprint of reconstruction for this section of Main Street. So in the application, the project is two point four million dollars. We're asking for five hundred thousand in surface transportation funds. You might ask yourself, why can't we get more out of that for a, a large project like that? In this program, it's highly competitive. They have a big project program and they have a small project program. Toledo gobbles up a lot of the funds. You have to have an extremely competitive project to compete against them. Our US twenty-three project in Monroe Street is one that was able to compete with them. We were able to get funds for that. Our Erie and Monroe Roundabout and Erie Street resurfacing that's coming up in a few years, that was able to compete with Toledo. So we were able to get more funds in the program for that. This one scores well, just doesn't score that well. So we're kind of back into the small project category and asking for five hundred thousand dollars for the application. We will be going, if successful, we will be going to Ohio Public Works Commission for additional funds, probably in the eight, eight hundred thousand dollar range noted there. So right now, we're looking at a one point one million dollar project cost locally more. So we would request permission to advertise, request permission to solicit for grant funds for the surface transportation program.
That's your, your update on this year's project. It's been a very visible project on Main Street. A lot of lane restrictions, some complaints coming into the mayor's office about how long they were there or damage to front yards and things like that. What is the current status of that project?
Sure. Sewer lining work on Main Street's piece started, I would say, late spring. We probably were up that way about April, April-ish. We have a couple laterals to finish there, so in the next two weeks, the sanitary portion of that work will be done. While we're doing that work, the gas company has intermediate and medium pressure, one on each side of the road. I can tell you just in doing gas work with them around town, the intermediate pressure is really critical infrastructure to them. There's two main feeds of gas in Slovenia. Main Street is one and silica is the next. So this is a really critical piece of infrastructure that they wanted to get done before we were doing the roadway piece. So you've seen a lot there. You've seen sewer work. You've seen gas work. That's been everything so far. All that's going to wrap up here in about a couple of weeks. And then when we flip the calendar into August, our roadway contractor will mobilize and they've given us a start date of August twelfth to do that work. And then that's when everything inside the curbs will come out and we'll fix that. That goes from the bridge all the way to the limits we just kind of described there to just south of Ravine.
Traffic being restricted in one direction?
Correct. Southbound direction during both phases. So we'll shift traffic over to one side and then when that side's done, we move it over to the other.
And I, I know we've talked about it, but I want you to answer in front of council. We have let the local residents and St. Joseph Parish know of that one direction, southbound traffic, which, what is the estimate for completion and ending that restriction?
Yeah, probably in September, October. It'll probably be two, two and a half months to get the roadway piece of it complete. We've been coordinating with them for about four years now, so they're fully aware of how the traffic's going to be maintained and when. The unfortunate thing on the timing of it was the OPWC funds that came with this project had a not start date until July first. The project agreement had to come through. You can't put a shovel in the ground until that starts. So we were a little hamstrung on when we could start it. We're starting it the best we could based on the funding that we get. So it does spill into their school year a little bit, but we've been working with them on it.
It will be a challenging project for them and the Slovenia Schools Transportation Department. Moving north to south. And also perhaps on Sundays as well.
Yep.
Okay. We do have an ordinance here to allow us to go after this new grant for the phase three project, resolution eight, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Richards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce resolution number eight, two thousand and twenty-four by title only. A resolution authorizing the mayor and director of finance to repair and submit an application to participate in the surface transportation block grant managed by the Toledo Metropolitan Area Council of Governments in the Main Street reconstruction project and execute contracts as required. I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
Second.
I move that seconded for passage of Resolution Number 8, 2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries of Resolution 8, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. The next two items are referrals to the planning commission. I'm not sure whether you or Leslie should talk about these. The first one is Flower Hospital's central utility plant improvements.
I'd be happy to talk about that one, Mr. Richardson. So they have some central plant work that they need to do in the very center of their campus. If you kind of can look, I would say, north and then on the north and east side of their main hospital, it's kind of guarded by the parking garage. There's a small grass area that kind of sits in the middle. It's kind of the footprint we're talking about, but they're doing some central plant stuff. So the very first phase, they've got some three-phase work to do there, but the first phase is they bought some new generators, emergency generators that they need to house. So they're doing some work to do that. It's actually a lot of fire coordination that goes with this in terms of ingress and egress to different phases of it, and those are things they're coordinating with the hospital. But it's basically utility work in the central core of their campus. The reason it's here is because it is a special use permit, so anytime you're amending the special use permit, it has to be in front of council for those changes.
When I first heard of this, I thought of their electrical substation work, which is farther to the north. This is really pretty visible from.
Right.
Outside of the campus. It's south of the parking garage and north of the Port, the tower of the hospital that was just increased by a story or two a few years ago. And we do have an architect working on it, so.
You do. So he is their architect.
And we need a motion to refer this to the planning commission for their, who are you? Mr. Han?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we refer special use.
We have another problem.
Application. This is the. I move that we refer the central utility plan addition for Flower Hospital project to the planning commission for their review and approval of the change to the special use plan.
Second.
So I move that seconded for referral to the planning commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and this will be added to the planning commission agenda. I just spoke, we only have one plan commission referral. We have two liquor permits to discuss. We're up to agenda item 17. The first is a change from Tam O Shaner Sports to Gio's Pizza and Loft at Tam O Shaner. Chief, any comments on this one?
We reflect at the application, so we found no problems with the applicant, so it's be alarming to us.
Doesn't look like anybody has a problem. So the motion we need is not to request a local hearing for this liquor. You're the president of council tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make a motion to not request a hearing for the Gio's Tam O Shaner LLC liquor permit.
Second. I move that seconded not to request a local hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will respond to this notice to the Ohio Liquor Control, Vision Liquor Control. Agenda item 18 is just down the street from there at Torley's Homemade Pizza. It's been bought, it's being named Marcel's Restaurant at 6,600 Sylvania Avenue. Chief, any comments on this one?
Well, again, we did check on the applicant and we found nothing of concern.
No operational issues in the past?
No operational issues in the past, so.
Mr. Richardson.
I will make a motion to not request a hearing for the Marcel's Restaurant liquor permit.
Second.
I move that seconded not to request a local hearing for this liquor permit change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now that we've done the item 19, we have a request for the Gub Deals sale of free city park pieces of equipment. They're listed in your council packets. They date from 1992, come to 2008 for a lawn mower deck, one lawn mower deck. Any comments on these, Mr. Shaw?
More than served their life, Mr. Mayor. 1990, when you started having 19s in those years.
See, they're approximate, too, here.
Yeah. Certainly done their due diligence. Not, not much value in them. The mower may go for a couple thousand, but certainly some items that may some might be quite useful.
You can see in your memo that it's a Dayton portable oil-fired heater is the oldest one, a Dayton 30-gallon upright air compressor is the 96 one, and then the 2008 mower. We need a motion to allow these to be offered for auction on GubDeals.com. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to offer a Dayton 2000 portable oil-fired heater, 1996 Dayton 30-gallon upright air compressor, and a 2008 grasshopper front deck mower on the Gub Deals website.
Second.
I move that seconded to authorize those three items to go to auction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next two agenda items are confirmations of the mayor's appointments to two different positions here in town. The first one is a, is very good news. I have met Mr. Eric Barnes, the deputy service director, and made an appointment to him. I'm sure Mr. Shaw would have some kind words to offer.
Sure, absolutely. Thrilled with this item on the agenda myself, so excited to have Mr. Barnes come our way. We're fortunate. Took a while to do some looking, but this worked out really well. Eric comes to us from the county engineer's office in Hancock County. He was, kind of, they, they do like their, their elected position and they have a couple of chief ones that kind of do different divisions of what they do, but he would be one of their chief engineers per Hancock County. 28 years old, lives in Perrysburg.
Say 28?
28 years old. I was 33 when I did that position, so he's a little younger than me, but, but, but certainly capable.
He could be around for a while.
Yes. Yeah. So great deputy county engineer in Hancock County. He has work in Shelby County, which is even further south of there as a civil engineer. He graduated from Ohio Northern University. Bright guy, really excited to have him. Young, young guy, very excited to come in. He likes what we do here. He, he loves our, our approach to projects. He loves the grant funding work that we do. It's going to be exciting to kind of teach him how to do that, so really excited to have him on. He told us he was going to be able to unpack from his current job and start in September, so.
He is being respectful of his current employer after this legal and alert, and it's my intention to have him come to the second meeting in September, so you can all meet him after he starts in on the job.
Absolutely.
But I do need your confirmation of Eric Barnes as the new deputy service director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we confirm Mr. Eric Barnes as the new deputy public service director for the City of Sylvania.
Second.
I move that seconded to confirm the mayor's appointment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Shaw, thank you for your diligent work staying on and finding him. Not sure what the brain was, but it seemed hopeless for a little while, but then it got to him.
Right at the end of the tunnel, very excited.
Okay. Second confirmation is really a reappointment of Dr. Richard Lawrence Monk, M.D., to be our representative on the Cleveland Lucas County Board of Health. Dr. Monk has been there for a while. He does very good enthusiastic work. We're very fortunate to have him on the job for us, and I have reappointed him, but request, we need to have your confirmation of that reappointment.
I'll make a motion to confirm the reappointment of Richard Monk to the Lucas County Board of Health.
Second. I move that seconded to confirm the mayor's appointment of Dr. Monk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the mayor's reappointment is confirmed. We're to agenda items 22 and 23, committee reports or committee referrals. Mrs. Westfall?
Mayor, I'd like to schedule the Employ and Community Relations Meeting. If I could talk with the committee members. Patrick, Richardson. I'm thinking of August 6th or 8th in the morning. Or will that be actioned?
One second. Week, I'm going to be in Hilton Head.
Well, so can't you just change your date? All right, how about the week before?
It'll be next year.
All right. How about the week before on July 29th or 30th, or either of those dates, actioned?
What time in the morning are you thinking?
What time works? I, I would do as early as 7:30.
I'll be out of time for most days.
Oh, my.
Oh.
The council meeting is on the 19th, so I'd like to have this meeting prior to that and make sure we're clear on that discussion. So how about the week of the 12th? Are you, anybody gone that week?
I'm going to do this at 7:30. That's not my best hour, but I will do it if necessary.
Mr. Han?
I would need to do it at 7:00 that week.
You're gone at 7:00.
No, I would, I would need to do it.
Is it better for you at 7:00, Mr. Han?
That's, that's not my best.
What about end of, what about the end of the day?
What about the end of the day? End of the day would be fine.
Yeah, I'm good. Afternoon, whatever.
All right, so 13th or 13th, 12th, 13th or 15th at 4:30?
12th.
12th is good.
This is Westfall. 5:30, either 7:00 AM or 5:30 PM that week.
That's my only.
Okay. Is 5:30 too late for you guys?
5:30 is great.
I can do. 12th is good.
5:30 on Monday, August 12th for the Employ and Community Relations Committee to discuss the court appointee or salary issue that was on the agenda this evening. And that's a motion.
Here or where do you want me?
I think here is fine.
Council members, okay.
And I present it as a motion.
Second.
I move that seconded to set a Employee and Community Relations Committee meeting for August the 9th, excuse me, 12th. At 5:30 PM in these chambers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will post that committee meeting, and I will be with interest tomorrow morning. The Blade reporter was here, and that's the only reason he was here. He set his recorder on the table and left as soon as that was done. We'll see what, how that got on Blade's agenda and see what he has to say. Any further committee business? Hearing non-information section of the agenda is just meeting minutes from the Board of Architectural Review and the Municipal Planning Commission from last week. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. So I move that seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and this council stands adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, August 19th at 7:30 PM. Thank you all for attending and holding on with us.
I think we are. Got a lot of information.